Our opening exercises are courtesy of teacher Rachel Miller and her new cancer club at Crystal River High School. And I'm going to turn it over to you and introduce your children and tell us what you're doing and why.
Okay, so my name is Rachel Miller and I teach at Crystal River High School. I have my microphone. Oh, sorry. I hear that.
For the record, my name is Rachel Miller. I am a teacher at Crystal River High School. I teach English II and English II honors. And I started this fabulous STACK Club, Students and Teachers Against Cancer, last year. And many of the students have stuck with me since last year. And a couple of them will tell you their story today, and then I'll come back up. So first up is Ms. Gloria.
Students and Teachers Against Cancer is the club we are here to represent today. My name is Gloria and I'm a sophomore at Crystal River High School, home of the Pirates. I'm the president of the STACK Club and I have been involved since the first day began during my freshman year. I believe the youth of today is what can create a chain reaction for our future. In our club, we do fundraising to raise money for local cancer organizations. An example of this is Pizza Hut Night, as well as Cash for Cancer, and our T-shirt fundraisers, which we have done for the past two years of this club's entity. From both years collectively, we've raised over $1,200. This money has gone to research, as well as to help local cancer patients and their families. Me and my fellow peers, teachers, and other helpful volunteers put our hard work and dedication into these and many other fundraisers. In the end, it's so worth it in our hearts. It's what motivates us to do better. We plan to do even more fundraisers as our club progresses. The reason I am so passionate about STACK is because we need more people to be passionate about cancer. I've never had anybody pass away from cancer, nor has anyone in my family had it, thankfully. However, if it were to happen, I would want somebody to help by caring as much as my peers, my teachers, and I care. When students join STACK, it makes them feel like they are putting a mark in the ground that will make a path to a cancer-free world. Each mark that is made by me and my fellow peers in this club will make roads to cancer research and success. It's not just a dream, it's a goal to help others and make this world a better place. As we grow, we hope to visit children's hospitals around the holidays and give gifts we accumulate. The event which we are most looking forward to is the It's All About the Cause Cancer Walk. Our club is setting a challenge for all the schools to help to make this event a success. The walk will be at La Canto High School from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, March 14th. We will be honoring and remembering our local cancer heroes. We have flyers for this event, and we are hoping to spread the word and to raise money and honor our local cancer heroes. The school with the most attendees will win this year's Spirit Stick while helping such a good cause. The best part is the majority of the money will stay right here in Citrus County for local cancer patients. To sign up, your team, a survivor, or to donate, please go to www.natricostcancercrusaders.org. Thank you for giving me and my club the opportunity to speak with you today. I'll now pass it on to my friend Avery Rolston.
My name is Avery Rolston. I go to Crystal River High School and I'm also a sophomore. I was three years old when my mother got the sad news of her son being diagnosed with cancer. That son is me. Cancer is definitely difficult to go through, but I've had the luxury of now remembering most of it. My mom went through most of the sorrow. I am honored to be in STACK Club and be able to help people get through what my mom and I went through. It's important to me, not just because I went through everything that I have, but because I'm fortunate enough to be in remission. I'm a survivor that wants to see other people survive too. STACK is a club that matters in this generation of age, because we will continue to reserve and pinpoint problems while working hard to solve them, but we must do it together. Our club will continue to unify with even more youth to create a domino effect that will make this world a better place, even if it's just one person at a time. Thank you for having me today and allowing me to share my story. Let's beat cancer together.
How many of you in here have been affected by cancer? Family, friends? That's a lot of hands. Unfortunately, cancer will directly impact many of our lives, if it hasn't already. According to data from the American Cancer Society, nearly half of all men and one-third of all women will develop some form of cancer in their lifetime. This is a very scary statistic. For me, cancer has been something that so many of my loved ones have endured. Most recently, my dear mom. She was diagnosed 10 years ago with stage IV non-small cell lung cancer. 10 years, yes, 10 years, stage IV lung cancer. She battled this terrible disease. On December 8th, just a couple months ago, her fight came to an end. It is because of her and many others that I fight so hard. I am so blessed to have students who care just as much as I do and want to do everything that they can to help us in cancer once and for all. Students and Teachers Against Cancer, STACK, was formed to do just that. We may be a small club, but boy are we mighty. It gives me great hope that we will find a cure one day. In a study done by Mayo Clinic, the five-year survival rate in America from 2009 to 2015 was 67.1%. There is hope. I just want to tell my club how proud I am of each and every one of them. It is students like Gloria, Avery, Anne, Anna, Angela, Natalie, and several others who are willing to go that extra mile to give us hope for a better tomorrow. They help to inspire me and so many others. I hope to see everyone on the track as we partner with the Nature Coast Cancer Crusaders on Saturday, March 14th, from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. at La Canto High School for our It's All About the Cause Cancer Walk. This event is in lieu of the Relay for Life that we used to have at all three high schools, but we no longer have, which benefited American Cancer Society. Which school will win the Spirit Stick this year and help to raise funds and awareness for our local cancer patients right here in Citrus County? I'd like to leave you with a quote by the late Christopher Reeve. He stated that "Once you choose hope, anything's possible." This is so true in life, but especially with our club and while working to end this terrible disease we call cancer. My hope is that one day, cancer will be just a Zodiac sign and that nobody else will lose their mom or have a son diagnosed at just three years old, or any age for that matter. Thanks again for your help and for allowing me and my wonderful STACK students to share our passion project with you today. Thank you.
Now, if everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They are our future for sure, aren't they? Any motion for the adoption of the agenda as recommended by the Superintendent Hibble? Move approval. I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mrs. Powers, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the Superintendent Hibble. Discussion?
Yes. Is the item, just a point of order, on number 10, Planning and Growth Management, that says consent? Is that still going to be a presentation? Is that pulled from consent?
I have it on the agenda.
Okay, so, okay. And then we did pull the item 7, as the agenda, but we don't think the issue that we were supposed to...
Correct, correct. Okay. Alouds in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Citizens' comments. The first citizen's comment is reserved for items requesting approval on the agenda. Another opportunity is available for any subject at 5:15 and again at the end of the business. Are there any citizens' comments dealing with the agenda? Any citizens' comments dealing with the agenda? We need to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval, second.
I have a motion on the, for to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Set agenda is approved 5-0, and we have recognition of donations. We will read those.
Approve the $500 donation to Crystal River Primary School from Crystal River Primary Camp to the organization. Approve the $1,000 donation to Home South Elementary School from Home South English Club. Approve the $2,000 donation to the Campbell Primary School from the Campbell Walmart Transportation. Approve the $1,000 donation to Cypress High School from the Ted Williams Museum and Peter's Hall of Fame. Approve the $1,000 donation to Cypress High School from Great American Rivalry Series. Approve the $500 donation to Crystal River High School from Douglas Hockenberry. Approve the $1,400 donation to Crystal River High School from Certified Air Conditioning Mark Rogers. Approve the $690 donation to Crystal River High School from Kathleen Anderson. Approve the $550 donation to the Campbell High School from Coastal Engineering Associates. Approve the $500 donation to the Canto High School from Terra Honor DOPA. Approve the $500 donation to the Campbell High School from American Realty and Investments of Citrus County. Approve the $4,865.94 donation to Rural City Elementary, Emeryness Primary, Hernando Elementary, Pleasant Grove Elementary, Citrus High, Emeryness Middle, Crystal River Primary, Forest Ridge Elementary, Central Ridge Elementary, and La Canto Primary School from Cornerstone Baptist Church. Approve the two $500 scholarships to with Lutu T Technical College from the Emeryness Doug's Road Number 232. Approve the $1,000 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Bright Nation. Total donations, $16,505.94.
And that's how we survive some of our programs with all the donations from this community. We're so thankful for all of you. Thank you so much. Moving on to Dr. Giebert, Educational Services, Commissioner's Academic Challenge.
Good afternoon, Sadevaher from Research and Accountability. This afternoon, I am happy to present to you two outstanding groups of young academics. The combined knowledge of these students is nothing short of astounding when you see them compete. First, please help me in recognizing the La Canto High Academic Challenge team. This team is coached by Mr. Ty Hamilton and Ms. Angela Hamilton. Their varsity team placed first in the county at the end of their regular season. This afternoon, we are presenting them with a new plaque of recognition for the district traveling trophy, which has made its home at La Canto High School for the last several years. And the second group I'd like to present to you is the members of our 2020 District Academic Challenge team, who will be receiving their T-shirts this afternoon. Our district team will compete at the 35th Annual Commissioners Academic Challenge in April at Disney's Yacht Club Resort, where they will be challenged in areas such as ELA, STEM, social studies, fine arts, and world languages. They will have the opportunity to win one of six $1,000 scholarships, the championship ring, if you think about the Super Bowl ring, it's very similar, as well as trophies and medallions. But it isn't all hard work and no play. Our team will also get to spend one day in one of Disney's theme parks during their stay. All of this at no cost to the students or schools. We receive a grant each year from the state that helps sponsor their attendance. We're definitely a round of applause for that. So without further ado, the six students who qualified this year for our district team are Brandon Bommer, who is a senior at Cypress High School. Aiden Bush, who is a junior at La Canto High. Suman, I'm not gonna... Not the best student at La Canto High. Ethan Hooper, who is a junior at La Canto High. Ashton Wyllon, who is a sophomore at Citrus High. And Maxwell Woof, who is a senior at Crystal River High. And of course, our team would not be as successful as it is moving forward without Mr. John McNeil from Crystal River High, who will be coaching. And Ms. Angela Hamilton, who will be assisting. If anyone's interested in seeing them live in action, the event is livestreamed on Facebook, so you can always log in and see them compete. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is School Support Services, Planning and Growth Management. Mr. Dixon?
Good afternoon, Dean. How you guys doing? I am here to ask for approval of the instructional and support recommendations that is listed on the Goldenrod.
Second, I have a motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mrs. Bryant to approve the instructional and support recommendations on the Goldenrod. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Next on our agenda is School Support Services, Planning and Growth Management. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, Mr. Dixon.
You had a couple things, right?
Yes, it's basically a package. That's the end-of-year report, which basically summarizes our student enrollment trends and what we're doing to address growth. And then the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, which is a guideline or set of procedures for implementing your policy on school choice. And then finally, to set your public hearing to readopt your attendance boundaries for next year, 2021. And I'll just kind of walk you through it. It's like the 14th year we've done this report. And so, the high schools, in summary, we have about 14% excess capacity in the high schools. They're all kind of evenly distributed, maybe with La Canto High School seeing the most growth, which is a normal trend. You can see the last five years, we're up a little bit each year at that facility, so we should be in pretty big shape this coming year, although we need to start thinking about growth in the center part of the county. Middle schools, we have 704 available student stations. We're at about 16% excess capacity. And we did rezone a few years ago and moved some students from La Canto, Crystal River area, so you can kind of see the trend there. La Canto last year was at 8%, now it's only 5%. Crystal River was 13% last year, this year it's 21%. So we don't foresee any issues with the middle school capacity. In the elementary schools, we're a little tight, but they're all pretty evenly distributed in terms of student stations that are available. We have 502, or only 6% excess capacity currently. So this is a snapshot in time. Every year, we do it at the end of the year, the calendar year, right before the winter break, so that you can compare year over year how the trends are changing. Overall, for the year, we were down 113 students in the high school grades. We were up 84 students in the middle school grades and up 76 students in the elementary, for a total of 47 overall, which is pretty close to what we projected last year. Then, some of the projects that affect student enrollment are listed in the report, capital projects within our district, and also the things that are going on around us that may affect building permits and residential sales. The two that I know you're interested in are La Canto Complex Evacuation Project. It's in process and the funding has been approved for both Phase 1 and 2, the Impact Fee Funding. The Interlocal Agreement, which we've had in the works for several years, has been approved and it's now in place as required. Going forward to next year, the recommendation that I'm bringing forward is to readopt the current attendance boundaries for all elementary, middle, and high schools for the 2020-21 school year, to make some changes to the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan to address some issues that have come up over the course of the year. And I'll walk you through those. Under eligibility requirements, all students must be enrolled at their home school if they are new students to Citrus County School District prior to reviewing their request to attend an out-of-zone school through the Controlled Open Enrollment Process. And the reason for that is so we can see how many students we have in the system, because a lot of times, they won't enroll in a home school because they don't want to go there. They're trying to enroll in a different school. So it may be weeks before we know how many students are in the system, so we think that we might be able to address that issue by just this procedure. And then there are the time period for accepting applications. We're recommending applications for the current school year will not be accepted after midterm in the second semester unless a student's residence changes or extraordinary circumstances warrant moving a student this close to the end of the year. Because what we found is, because you're grandfathered in every year if you're already attending, that students will try to move at the end of the school year, so they're in place for the beginning of the next year. And that creates a problem for the student, because that's when they're being tested and when they're going through a lot of the processes at the school for their educational requirements. So we don't want to encourage that. And that's kind of an unintended consequence of having everyone enroll at the beginning of the year. And then finally, a new section that says that, and I mentioned this previously when we talked about school board policy. In the case of a student changing residence during the school year, the Department of Planning and Growth Management will create a new special attendance preference record for the student, so they may remain at the school in subsequent years until the student completes the highest grade level at the school unless the student is suspended or expelled from the school. If the student is suspended or expelled from the school, the reassignment may be rescinded and transportation will not be provided for students who reside out of zone unless the student is enrolled in a special program. The school board has approved out-of-zone transportation for that particular program. So that way, that's to address another problem that we've had where students move and then they don't bother to fill out a form and get it approved because they're afraid it might not be approved if they're moving. And then they think, well, I'm not going to fill out a form and ask to get it approved because I know the school's overcrowded and if I do that, it might get denied. Well, now it's automatically approved, so they don't have to worry about it and the administrator doesn't have to worry about it. And that summarizes the recommendation. I did want to note that going forward, the projections for next year, based on cohort progression, are kind of interesting. You can kind of see, for elementary, for the first time, we're going down a little bit, 13 students. We're going down in middle school, but we're going up 172 in the high school, which we haven't seen in a while. And the reason for that is because we have a large ninth grade that's moving up to high school. And so the total projected increase for next year is 148 students, as of now. Could change. And that summarizes it. Do you have any questions?
I do. One of the things that, I know a lot of this isn't statute, Mr. Dixon, so I think, other than the changes that you're suggesting, our open enrollment policies have changed, or had to change as a result of statute. Something I learned this year, and I thought the board, you know, it's a good time to bring it up. So if a student is in a program like AES, and they're zoned for, say, La Canto, but they want to play sports at Crystal River while going to AES, in the past, you couldn't do that, because you had to play or, you know, be a part of a team that you were zoned in. But I understand now, through open enrollment statutes, that's no longer the case. They could apply for their base school to be a different school than their zone school and their choice school to be AES. So therefore, I could be zoned for La Canto, play ball for Crystal River, and go to AES. Is that correct?
It is, but we currently have a bit of a prohibition on going back and forth. So if you choose to do that and you want to go to a different home school, then you would have to stay there for the duration of the year.
But if I'm at AES, it doesn't matter. So in other words, for at least those two...
You can't stay on the, you like, go to Crystal River without physically moving your address and then say, "Right place, right Citrus."
Right, right. I couldn't switch sports, really, from school to school, but I could choose to be a part of a sports program. If, especially in a situation like AES, where I'm choosing a school, and for two years, I could choose a school based on what sports I'd like to play, I just can't move around to school.
There's two caveats to it that I know of. One is you'd have to be based on available space at the school, and two, you'd have to actually go through the try process and make a team and that kind of thing.
And those are two good, important points. But that means, in Crystal River's case, since right now they're under the 90% capacity, they pretty much would be automatically enrolled there, subject to, you know, some of the minimum threshold, I believe. So that brings the second question up. Because we, and I believe in open enrollment in the general sense, I think our district has done a phenomenal job. Before open enrollment was even part of law, we tried to take the approach, if students felt they wanted to be at a certain school and we could accommodate that, I think it's always been our, you know, at every grade level, there's been trying to accommodate that. And we have an amazing transportation department, that even if they don't have a bus stop right there, she will try and get a bus transfer. If it's within possible, they'll try and get something to accommodate them. Those are all great things. The challenge is, if I choose to go to a high school... The challenge is, if I choose to go to a high school, let's say, because of a specific academy or program there, and I am not zoned for there, and then I decide to drop out of that program because of the way the laws are now, that student is, now have the ability to stay at that school for the remainder of their school years. So, you have a school like La Canto's that people will start there, but then La Canto's kind of has that challenge of, that capacity keeps growing there, because the students then might choose then to stay there, even though they're not in that program any longer.
Currently, that's true. It depends, like, if it did get overcrowded, though they may not be able to stay, but currently, if, we don't have a policy that would limit that per se, but at some point, we might have to look at that.
And that's what I was just going to say. I think we just kind of have to keep our eye on that, because it can become challenging for a school that all of a sudden has capacity, you know, they don't have capacity, and then they want to service, you know, their students and programs, and then they may not be able to, because they've taken on these students.
I don't see, foresee any problems in the coming year.
Not in the coming year, but I do think it's something we have to monitor on that. So, those were just two things that I wanted to make sure I clarified. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, those are good points, Mr. Kennedy. As we never know what can come, come our way, or try. So, La Canto High School, 5% capacity is all they have. So, could a child go to La Canto right now to play a sport from an other school if they're zoned for that other school?
Currently, you know, with its projected capacity, so we don't really know what the enrollment is going to be until we start rolling. But, no, based on the projected enrollment, yeah.
So, are we, that goes through your office then on those requests?
Yes.
Okay. So, if a parent asked me, hey, can my kid go to La Canto, I want, you know, I want to go to open enrollment, and I want my kid to play a sport at La Canto, right now, that's not going to be eligible for next year?
The way it looks right now, no, it's not going to be.
Because our threshold is 10%, is that's the policy.
Correct.
But if you're at a school, and your home school is La Canto, and you're wanting to go back, you're, you're, you're going to go back.
If you're zoned for La Canto, there's.
If you're zoned for La Canto.
You were serving on, if you were serving on an out-of-zone at one of these other schools, and now you want to go back to La Canto, even though it's at capacity, we would have to.
Right.
Okay. So, if I did go to Crystal River, sports, and then I wanted, because I'm zoned though to La Canto, I could go back to La Canto.
If you could physically go back to La Canto, jumping just for sports, if you're staying at AES.
And then, the other thing, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, we were down at high school, 113 this year, all right, but we're going to be up, we're projected to be up 148 next year.
Right.
We're basically going to pick up 35 over two years in high school. That's not a real big number. We're pretty flat, right, on our growth.
Well, we're, basically, we're seeing some in migration. I mean, we can't predict where, you know, what grades that's going to occur in, but we are seeing some. The cohort progression is from the middle school going to the high school, so that's why we're projecting that much growth in the high school. Those students are already in our system, they're just moving up from middle school to high school. We're going to see some more. Some are going to move out at the same time, but that's how many are actually in the system that are just going to advance to the ninth grade.
And then, I'm glad to see you putting the projects in here. Obviously, the IMS traffic issue is still there, and I know it's not funded, but we still need to look at that, right, for dismissal and for parent pickup.
And we got one in Crystal River middle, too, that we're still trying to find funding. But we have priorities that come ahead of those, because those are more driven by.
We know the 41 widening is approved now.
Correct.
And that's going to start in, what, 2021 or 2022? I can't remember.
I think it's 21.
Yeah.
But that may solve a lot of our problem, that IMS.
Well, unless we reconfigure the parent pickup, I don't think it will, but, you know, that's something that we could, you know, but I'm glad that that's still, that's still there. I appreciate it, I read over it and appreciate the information that I can.
And I think there's, isn't there a stoplight at the junction now with the widening?
No.
No. Not yet.
It's, it's, it's two divided lanes with a median open, but there's no light planned there.
Okay. Get in the back door of that parking lot, it's a stop off.
It's still, the traffic's not going to back up as much, because there's going to be two lanes waiting.
Any other discussion? We just, the recommended action would be to accept the summary?
I move that we accept the summary of the school capacity report for the year ending in 2019, and approve the 2020-2021 Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, and advertise for a public hearing to adopt the attendance boundaries for the 2020-2021 school year at the April 14th School Board Meeting.
Second, I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Powers, to review and accept the summary of the school capacity report, year ending 2019, approve the 2020-2021 Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, advertise for a public hearing to adopt the attendance boundaries of the 2020-2021 school year at the April 14th 2020 School Board Meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Next, we have risk management. Mr. Ballmer, approve the agreement between Citrus County School Board and Medical Risk Solutions LLC.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Tell us the good news.
Yeah, so we are seeking to change our wellness center provider, just for an update. About a year and a half ago, Crown and Care Here dissolved their agreement. Those of you who don't know, Crown has been with us since we, since the inception of our Wellness Center. Care Here was brought in to manage that. Everything was going along hunky-dory. About 18 months ago, there was a dissolution agreement on that. And part of that agreement, we went with Care Here. Wasn't an option for us, that's what was decided. So, after a period of time, working with just Care Here, we looked around, we told Care Here we were going to look for other providers. We did look around, we did talk to other providers. The one that came back to us as the most beneficial to us would be the one that we know the best, which was Crown. Crown was what we're talking about, Medical Risk Solutions. Ray Tomlinson's here from Crown Medical Risk Solutions. Many of you may know Ray from whenever he was here when we first opened our wellness centers. And he's still involved in Citrus County. He's never left, and he's never given up that concern for our employees. We believe that we can expand services at the Wellness Center. We believe that our membership can grow with these expanded services. We can expand our formulary that's available beyond other things, and there's no additional cost with going with Medical Risk Solutions or My Help On Site. Any questions in the board?
I have no questions. I know that you met with me, and I know that all the board members, because that's difficult, so.
Individually?
Yes. Individually, thank you.
Hosters listening.
Yes. Individually, keep us informed of this. And, you know, this is a big process here, because, you know, I want to make sure, and I appreciate the presentation, you know, I just thought, well, let's just get it all, let's make sure we're all on the same page, because, a couple of things. First of all, the sheriff's office is in a coordinated effort with us still with this move, correct?
Correct. I spoke with Major Bitt yesterday, she spoke with the command staff, and they are going with the same provider as well. They're looking Care Here, go with it as well.
And secondly, I would, so you advised me that the non-compete clause with the personnel currently at Care Here, they are able to continue with their jobs at Medical Risk Solutions, or what you all refer to as Crown. And that is no legal violation, we're not going to be, we're not going to be.
No. Though, part of, they have a non-compete. If we went with anyone other than Crown, part of the dissolution agreement was that after this amount of time, if we decided to go, Citrus County Schools decided to go with Crown, the employees were free to come with us to Crown. If we went with someone else, the non-compete would still be in effect, we would not be able to bring those employees with us.
But because in the language that was set up of the contract with Care Here, that was permissible, I mean, we're completely sure of this.
Yes, the non-compete between Crown or Health Risk Associates and Care Here, yes, sir.
Okay. And obviously, Mr. Bradshaw has done his due diligence on this.
Oh, yes.
Everything is, everything is good. I mean, it's a long contract.
It's probably longer than the original one, yes.
That has a lot of good legal information here, but, you know, I just thought that we have some good people that work at Wellness Center.
Yes, we do.
And, you know, I've heard a lot of positive remarks from our customers.
Yes.
Who use the Wellness Center. And I'm also curious, because I did inquire about this company, Medical Risk, because Crown was, was more of the broker, right?
Yes, sir.
So, but this company is already established in some other jurisdictions, right?
Yes, sir. Pasco County Schools, I've been in contact with them for several months. They're extremely happy with the services they've been receiving from My Help On Site or Medical Work Solutions. They could not be more glowing in their reviews of what they've seen there. Seamless transition, their end user, their employees, their members have been extremely happy with what they've seen there. And they've kept all of their staff. Nato County Sheriff recently went over everywhere that has gone over, all of the staff has been able, they've been able to keep all the staff as well, because the staff enjoy what they do. They enjoy the relationship they have with our members, with their patients. And that's, that's a big, big deal to us, that the staff that we build those relationships with stay there at the center.
And you, of course, contacted some of those, I mean, that was, you reached out to some of those other.
Oh, yes.
Government agencies to find out the response.
Yeah, the Board of County Commissioners has been using My Help On Site since the dissolution. They went with them. Randy Oliver could not have been more happy.
And the fact that the county commission, our county commission, has this same arrangement, is not going to, there's no partnership, though, right, I'm assuming, that we're going into with the county, I mean, these are two separate contracts.
Correct.
Ours is the sheriff's office and Screen Ward, Warren R., Emress, and Beverly Hills, and the county does their thing.
Yes.
So, I would like it, since our gentleman Kane from Crown, I like that, if, could you ask him if he has some questions?
Absolutely. That's why he traveled all the way over here.
Let him discuss some things with us, sir. So, I know probably one of the big things is going to be the change of the website, right, and the appointments, and how you go about getting services, right? So, I wanted you to expand.
That's a good thing.
Expand on that a little bit. And just tell us, I mean, how are you going to provide a better service and save us money?
Well, I think we want to continue the level of service and improvement. And so, I think that it's pretty clear that when we were in charge of operations, we were closer to the organization here. We spent more time here in managing the staff and making sure that they had everything they needed to continue to be the professionals that they've been. We've got a wellness program that is not just programmatic, it's actually people on site. And so, that's going to be a different thing. The wellness activity you're going to see with registered dietitians and exercise physiologists available to meet with patients. And so, that's going to be one of the key factors we see. In terms of the website, you're right, it's a different website. It's just a matter of going and logging into a different portal. We're working on finalization of an app, so that the app will be available and make things more functional for those who are smartphone savvy. And so, we, we just have enjoyed the relationship here since 2009, and we are honored to be able to be in this position and bring the services. And we do have a number of other organizations that we represent, other Pasco schools, we're still at Charlotte County, Charlotte Sheriff. We have Osceola County, Osceola Sheriff. And we've got, let's see, we've got Flagler County, we've got City of Deland, and so we have a number of other facilities. We're approaching somewhere around 25,000 employees that use our services in the state. And some of us are homegrown Florida people, so we're here to stay.
And so, username and passwords, all those are going to change, though, correct?
Not necessarily. That would be up to the patients. They can choose their own username and password, and access would be a different point, but it's, it will be very simple. In fact, the process of using the electronic capabilities are easier under E Clinical Works, and that's our provider, with the employee health record system, the electronic.
And I guess, I mean, the database is going to change. I just can't go into your website and log in with my old.
No, so, correct. So, you go in and put in whatever username you want and password.
So, there's going to have registration variation?
Yes, sir. And that will be, that is very, very easy to do, and it's a very simple system to access.
And then on the prescription next, what is kind of available for the guy?
Well, initially, we don't want to change the formulary. We want to take a look at the formulary, we know what it's been, I mean, we kind of set that up. But we have the capability to increase the formulary based on what we believe the real needs are. And so, just to give an example, we spend more focus on chronic conditions under our management model than most other competitors of ours, and also even our former partner. And by the way, it was a, I don't know if friendly divorce is a correct word, but it was a friendly parting. It was sometime, we worked together almost 10 years, and so when we parted, we made these arrangements. We never had a non-compete arrangement to begin with, so the only reason that we agreed to a non-compete was to get that one exception, so that when, after a period of time, and there was a period of time in the dissolution agreement, by which we can then invite those medical staff to come over if the client comes over. So, that's a, that's really an exclusive, Care Here does not do that with anyone else. That was the reason it took us almost two years to negotiate the dissolution agreement. So, that's, that was what we negotiated, that was purposeful.
Mr. Kennedy?
Just, I'm grateful, one, that the website's changing. Probably the only part that I would say that I, it was the scheduling piece of it, it's just, so, I thought it was a great opportunity for that, so that's.
Thank you.
Like Mr. Dodd, I think my concerns were, how's our partnership agreements with the sheriff's office? And, you know, the pharmaceutical is exciting, that there's some opportunities going forward. So, we're not reducing anything pharmaceutical. The idea is that we hopefully are going to be able to look at some positive things down the road. I don't want to oversell it at this time.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
One of the things, and it's as much for staff, is that because the county also is using the same services, there seems to be that, there may be an opportunity there down the road, and maybe geographically looking at some other areas, maybe closer to the west side, that we could, could maybe partner on in a similar way that doesn't cost us anything, but, or it doesn't cost us necessarily any more, but then maybe be able to expand those, that situation. Because I can tell you, what we've learned is, the accessibility of going to, to the Wellness Center benefits, the staff members, it benefits our bottom line with the insurance costs. I was bragging to.
Good.
Yeah, to, to some of our colleagues outside of Citrus County, and saying, you know, well, you've got to get yourself a wellness center, because they were complaining they're having 20% increase this year in their insurance costs. And they're like, so what did yours cost? I said, you don't want me to tell you. You just don't want me to tell you.
I'd like for you to tell me.
And I did. And we talked about that, which was refreshing to go through that again. Mr. Dodd, I appreciate you asking that, because that was a concern I had when we were briefed, is, we have a lot of people that have become, you know, these physicians' assistants, these physicians, they're not just the Wellness Center staff, they've become like our small-town, you know, medical doctors and medical physicians. So, having them have that opportunity to stay with them is something that, I know I, was one of my questions, you know, well, where so-and-so going? Because that's who, that's who I go to, that's who I, when I have a problem, I want to call them up. So, you've really created a small community atmosphere to a, which is really becoming a large corporation in a good way. So, thank you for.
We are blessed, and that was our intent, is create a familial type of approach, so that people, it's a capitated group, there's only so many, we don't have people coming in off the street. So, it's a, it's a group that get to know each other, they already work together, and the dependents and the others, retirees. They already work together, and the dependents and the others, retirees, they have access to the health center. And so we want that to continue. And removing those barriers to healthcare was important to us. That's why we've gone that direction.
Superintendent Campbell?
I would just like to add, because I know we want to make a change. Everybody is worried about our employees and make sure there's a good transition and it's transparent. And I will tell you, I can remember our first meeting with Ray, and I think Kenny Block was in the meeting.
Was.
And a couple of members from Ray's team and a couple of our staff. And we asked a few questions. We had a few, several demands, as usual. And I know they came right back and answered everything. And through this whole process before the split, Ray and his team are the ones we always contacted at the follow-up, and that was the group we really wanted to go with when they split. That wasn't our choice, so...
Nor ours.
Or theirs. It just happened, but now it's come full circle again. And I think the relationship we have with Ray and his team, I think we'll see some huge positive changes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the agreement between School Board and Medical Risk Solutions.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve the agreement between Citrus County School Board, Medical and Medical Risk Solutions LLC, doing business as my help onsite for employee wellness center services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
And thank you, Ray, for coming and making the trip to Orlando.
Thank you.
All right, next up.
Good afternoon. As you know, I've shared with you that we have an aging white fleet, and the average age of our vehicles is 13 years. We currently have a 10 to 12-year and 100,000 to 200,000 mile replacement schedule, which is based on the federal minimum replacement schedule. Many of our vehicles exceed both the age and the mile for replacement. Unfortunately, we have an annual budget that can't keep up with our replacement schedule. That's largely in part to the many, many years where we weren't able to purchase any vehicles and starting to fall behind. In addition, we know that our fleet is underutilized, largely in part because it's unreliable. Our staff just isn't confident in its reliability. Many of our vehicles also predate what are now standard safety features. And our current budget for vehicle acquisitions is $100,000, which equates to about three vehicles per year on average. At that pace, we will continue to stay behind our replacement schedule with aging and less reliable vehicles. So we set out to look for other options, and that's why I'm here today. We're asking for your approval of the lease agreements with Enterprise for leasing our white fleet, our staff vehicles. Under a community bid, the lease agreements have been reviewed by Mr. Bradshaw. He has approved them. We did make two minor changes that he suggested, so that's what is on the agenda. And I'd like to introduce to you Carol Fitzgerald. She is a fleet consultant with Enterprise. She will share some information with you on how the leasing partnership works and will explain how we can have newer, safer, more reliable vehicles while saving the district money. We'll be using a phased-in approach, replacing approximately 20 vehicles a year for the next five years, and ultimately end up with a five-year replacement cycle on average, putting our staff and sometimes our students who use those, who ride in those vehicles in newer, safer, and more reliable vehicles. I'm going to ask Carol to come up and if you have any questions. We do have a, we left you with some information. We can show that, so I can show you that. If you want to see it again, we have it here. And then I'm going to have Carol just give you some highlights.
Hi. Thank you so much, everyone, for inviting me in. And I want to say a special thank you to Marilyn and Assistant Superintendent Johnny Bishop, who we've worked together for almost a year now, doing analysis and vetting all of the information to come today with this solution for you. So I'm super excited to be here. Just as a point of reference, I've been working with the Citrus County Sheriff's Office since 2009. I also work with the Hernando County Sheriff's Office, Pasco County, Hillsborough Community College, Tampa Bay Water, just some of the local government agencies that we work with. We also work with four other school districts in the state of Florida and 120 school districts nationwide, and growing every day. The main reason for that is because we understand that with capital budget, your critical resources are your school bus fleet. So oftentimes what happens is the white fleet, the smaller and light-duty fleet, will get neglected or deferred. And then we'll get into a situation like where we are in today, where we have an aged fleet that's missing a lot of the safety features that have been available, you know, over the past several years and all the improvements that are happening. So what we're able to do is put together a program, including an open-end lease. And I always like to first tell anyone leasing sometimes can be a very negative, have a negative connotation. This lease has no mileage restrictions and no damage penalties. It's also something that you can get out of at any point in time if you feel like the program isn't working for you. And we meet on an annual basis with Marilyn, with her team. We have a strategic account manager and account fleet coordinator, a number of folks that are going to support and essentially be an extension to your fleet management staff here to make sure that we're managing it and not only meeting what our initial projections are, but also looking for opportunities to exceed those and improve savings. And the biggest area of opportunity for Citrus right now is your internal customers, your employees and staff. As we replace some of these older vehicles, they're going to have standard equipment in them, such as electronic stability control that's been a standard option since 2012, blind spot indication systems, a number of different rearview cameras for a lot of the folks that are driving cargo vans for your maintenance and service departments. So a lot of different features that I believe will make your individual employees much happier, much safer. And then we'll also support with all technology to manage a pool fleet resource, too, for administration and pool vehicles. So I know I just told you a lot of information, so I'll pause for a moment and take any questions, of course.
And I just want to start with Mrs. Farmer. I'm the new kid on the block in the board. And one of my questions was budget when I first came on board. And just for the general public and the record, we still have not met the amount of money that the state funded school boards in 2008 to this date. We penny pinched and budget is next, Ms. Wilson. But I just want to personally thank you for even working with us and coming up with an idea to save us money.
And dollars.
Mr. Dodd?
So we talked in the meeting, and I know you all met...
Individual meetings.
You all met with me, and I think you met individually with everyone. Which we appreciate. So we talked about these vans at the high schools that students are, that students are transported in, right? And that as being a priority, right?
Absolutely.
And so can you just explain to me how that would look as far as, you know, those vans? We do have some new vans, though. We did buy some like two years ago.
We do have new vans, and we also have 2009 vans at each of the high schools. Each has one 2009 van. We have three aging vehicles in the Transportation Department that will be replaced. Those new vehicles, new vans, will go to the high schools. And their 2009s will come to the Transportation Department, where we will use them for checking bus stops, trainers traveling from site to site, managers traveling from site to site, various needs within our department. We also do loan those out to other departments when they need them as well. So that those 2009s will still stay in our fleet, but the high schools will have vans at their high schools.
And what's the guarantee from Enterprise that there'll be new vehicles? Because it looks like in the contract, there's the leasing.
Absolutely. And that's an excellent question. What a lot of people don't realize is that when they think of Enterprise, they think of Enterprise Rent-A-Car. We're actually a sister company, Enterprise Fleet Management. So we specialize in longer-term solutions. So the vehicles that will be getting you, the vans, trucks, anything, will be ordered directly from the manufacturer, brand-new and delivered to you.
Because we will give you kind of our desire for a type of vehicle, size, all those things. And literally, you're going to Enterprise purchases a vehicle in bulk, right, at discounted prices? And that's how we benefit here, right? But that doesn't mean we can pick the vehicle because we've got to agree to take what you're going to supply us, though. Is that as part of the deal, Eric?
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely. Marilyn and her team will sign off on any individual ordered spec that we put together for you. So we've already been working with her in identifying, and we do this on an annual basis, by the way, as well. We'll always look in a vehicle class category, for example, minivans. And we'll compare all the different manufacturers and look for the opportunity for the lowest cent per mile as far as total operational costs. And then ultimately, you guys get to choose which type of van you're going to be in fleeting.
And then the other thing, I just want to make sure because didn't you say that, I mean, we do have some vehicles that are not going to be replaced, that we're going to trade? So, but are we going to get more than, we're getting more than five in the initial lease, though, right?
20 per year.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approximately. 20 per year for the first five years.
Okay.
And then depending on sometimes, so it depends on when they're at their prime selling point is what determines when they'll be replaced. But it's approximately a five-year replacement cycle. Some might be replaced sooner, some might be replaced longer if they have specialty equipment and that type of thing. But on average, it's every five years. So the first initial, the first initial purchase would be 20 vehicles for this year.
Right. Yeah, I guess I kind of, I misspoke there. We have more than 100 vehicles now, correct? I mean, we're going to be doing 20-year, five-years, that's 100 vehicles.
Correct. We are currently at about 120. We're de-fleeting, and we're getting rid of some of the vehicles that we are not going to replace at all. They will be removed from our fleet. They will be surplus. Those proceeds will go towards the leasing program, but they will not be replaced. So I think that the last kind of conversations that we had, we were at 106 once we de-fleet. So that, we look for that to go down even more because currently we do have more spares than we will need once our vehicles are more reliable. So we'll be able to de-fleet even more. So we're looking around 100, probably.
And we also talked a little bit about the maintenance vehicles, right, that we're going to probably outfit, right? We're going to, you know, put all this equipment into them.
Absolutely.
And that doesn't mean that we'll have to sell it for another five years, so that's not part of the contract.
Correct. It's all based on what we want to do. So if we want to cycle them up, and if we think if we can get a good price for them, of course, we would. And some of those vehicles will come outfitted with some of that equipment already, and some of those will sell because, better because they have that equipment. So it really depends on the individual vehicle. And that's what's really good about this option is that we have options. We're not locked into, you have to replace this vehicle because it's five years old. They look at the best price. So it's basically buy for the best price you can get and sell for the highest price you can get. So that's what's really good about this. There's a lot of flexibility.
So we could be trading cars in less than five years, so you can resell if there's some formula here.
Potentially, yeah.
Absolutely. And that's one thing I did want to add, Mr. Dodd. When it comes to buying vehicles, government buys very well. Government buys, as well as Enterprise Rent-A-Car does, and we have the largest fleet in North America with over 2 million vehicles. But what Enterprise does really well is how we sell vehicles on the backend. So every single year, your account management team is going to be working with Marilyn and her folks and looking at your vehicles every year as a portfolio of vehicles. If there's an opportunity to take advantage of a higher resale market one year, we'll let you know. You ultimately have that option of whether you would want to go ahead and sell that vehicle. But sometimes it makes sense because you could actually sell the vehicle for more than you paid for the vehicle. So those decisions can be made creatively and on an annual basis. And then also vice versa, if it's a softer market, we might recommend you extend the vehicle and service another year.
So Kenny?
So I'm thrilled that you're bringing this forward. I had actually had, was out with Mr. Dixon just before you brought this to us. And I was teasing him and said, "We are saving a lot of money on you driving around in the vehicle you are. I think we're going to have to get you a bicycle next." Because I'm not sure how much longer it was going to go. I looked at some of our lists, and one of the biggest misconceptions people have is, wow, you've got a big white fleet, therefore you must have a lot of expense in it. Unfortunately for us, our expense was that we didn't have the ability to maintain it because we have vehicles, how old is our oldest vehicle?
That's a good question.
So one of the big things... I was just going to say, I thought there was one in there.
It was 86 or 87.
Yeah. And that's, and that's what people don't understand, is how old our fleet is. Mr. Mullin, who drives around in a 1970's, you know, pickup truck, is thinking, "That's not old."
20 years old.
20 years old. And so you talked about the safety equipment differences, and we've talked about things like anti-lock brakes that our people are not driving around in, not to mention backup cameras and other safety features. But I think one of the things that I was first pleased with, and we've talked about it, but you used a term that was maybe not as common in this, outside of transportation. We're reducing the fleet. We are, you referred to it as de-fleeting. But for those of us who are, we're talking about reducing the number.
I got that term in my head.
And, yeah, that's, and that is, that's something I think we all would have said. And it wasn't that we just kind of obscurely came up and said, "Well, you know what? Let's just reduce it by 10% or reduce it." You actually went through an analysis and said, "This vehicle would not be used, or this we could pool and use as a pool service." And it was very meticulous, the way you've gone through. And then also analyzing our current fleet of how we could maximize the most out of that while we phase this in. So it was, it's not really, you know, we sometimes will have bids done. And we've talked about what we've learned over the years is you can't just look at a bid price and say, "Oh, that's the lowest. We're going to go with that one." We need to see with where we're going to be in five years, 10 years down the road. And I think that's what made me feel so comfortable, is that analysis was, there was a benefit today, there was a benefit tomorrow, and there was a long-term benefit to our district. So I'm grateful for those two, those elements of it. And Marilyn, again, you do something amazing every day. I will say, I did learn something, because I'd asked about the vans. Having a child that also drives around in a lot of those high school vans. And I'm thinking, "Well, let's just get a bigger van." You know, why aren't we driving around in a bigger van? Let's get a bigger one. And I learned through this process, no, we can't get a bigger van. We're limited by the size to meet the safety requirements. That comes up to a conversation that, again, Mr. Marilyn, I appreciate you do. We don't know, we shouldn't take the vans on some of our trips. You know, it's sometimes the most cost-effective and safest route is to take one of the school buses and not necessarily the white fleet.
Correct.
And I know, Mr. Mullin, you've kind of, you know, talked to administrators about that process. Miss Marilyn, you're always having that conversation, and your team is. And I appreciate that because, again, that impacts our white fleet. That impacts, you know, dollars that we don't already have. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bryant?
I'd like to approve the lease agreement with Enterprise for the white fleet vehicles.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the lease agreements with Enterprise for leasing of the white fleet staff vehicles. Any more discussion? I will say one thing, though, for Enterprise, because Mr. Kennedy and I were involved with the swimming teams at Crest River High School. And when the one or two vans didn't work, Enterprise was a pleasure to do business with them. They had to have a leased van. You delivered it. It was clean. It was gassed up. And so I had a long relationship with Enterprise before this date and very well pleased with the way you do business.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We have seven minutes for time certain.
Mrs. Wilson, you can come to the podium.
Of course you can.
And I need to just interrupt you for just a moment.
Yes.
But I need you to stand there.
Okay.
I have a letter from Lori A. Simmons, Chair of FGFOA Certification Committee. Yes. And I need to enter it into the record.
Okay.
It's addressed to me, but it should be addressed to the entire board. As President of the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, that's the FGFOA, it is my distinct pleasure to inform you that Tammy Wilson has successfully achieved the designation as a Certified Government Finance Officer, as a CGFO. In order to achieve this coveted designation, the candidates must successfully complete a series of five examinations. These exams cover the major disciplines of public finance, including accounting and financial reporting, debt administration, financial administration, municipal budgeting, and treasury management. Passing these exams are indicative of a mark of excellence in government financing. Currently, there are 491 individuals who have earned and maintained this prestigious certification. This CGFO program encourages a level of knowledge and professionalism in the field of government finance. It represents a commitment to professional development and professional competence for practicing governmental finance officers. a direct benefit to any government agency. Without the support of local organizational leadership, such as our board, candidates would be unable to achieve the CGFO designation. On behalf of the FGFOA and Mrs. Wilson, thank the board for your commitment to excellence in government finance. Sincerely, Lori A. Simmons. Thanks.
All right.
Well, okay. If we have, um, we've got about five minutes now because I took two minutes and seven minutes.
All right.
And we'll start with your budget update and yet we may have to interrupt you in five minutes.
I just really wanted to hand out the, um, the House, Senate, and Governor's proposals side by side for you. You know, in our nice little format, we've looked at it statewide and all the, all the documents that they send out. But this narrows it down to our district so we can, um, just look at our comparisons and, um, both the House and the Senate are probably the closest, I think, that I've ever seen it, um, to each other. There are three point five one four and three point five oh eight of an increase over our third calc for, um, either one respectively. But with that comes a lot of mandates and a lot of, um, requirements that they are making of us and, um, also an increase, a large increase to the FRS. And so, with these, we wait anxiously to see what they come up with and what the final conference report will be. And, um, you know, the executive team and myself and the principals and all the administrators, we've been looking to, you know, we'll start looking at what we need to do to meet these mandates. So, this is just where we are at this process. When we come to the workshop, we'll come to you with, um, the capital, where the capital stands at the time and where we are in the five-year work plan, so.
Ms. Wilson with the FRS, that's a real issue for us. That basically could wipe out a good portion, if not all, of the BSA that's proposed.
Yes. It, um, actually, Ms. Hemel just sent out some numbers right before the meeting. And we're looking at, um, four hundred and sixty, I'm trying to look at these numbers real quick, to, from one side to six hundred, four hundred and sixty to six hundred and twenty in the, in the red from the BSA increase over FRS.
So, about a one point one million in the red.
Yes.
And then the implementing bill is what scares me. The implementing bill would remind the board, and for those who don't understand, that's what gives us the language of how to implement the budget. If they set a floor for salaries, we could be talking about millions and millions of dollars Citrus County is going to have to find in our budget to, to do that because we will not be funded. With what this is showing, between FRS and that, um, some of the, some of the conservative figures are two million that we would have to come up with. And some of the more potential figures are six to seven million that we would have to come up with out of our budget. I don't remember a time.
Me neither.
Where we have to come up with that kind of money. And we've had some really tough years.
Yeah.
So, this has been the concern that we're all facing is that this could end up being really devastating to programs and a loss of people. We're going to have to make some, we're going to have to look at some really tough things if the implementing budget, I mean, the implementing bill says that. And I know, Ms. Hemel, you're on it, but it scares me to death.
And be careful about saying loss of people because what we would have to do is consolidate positions. Because remember, we still have forty to fifty open teaching positions currently. So, um, we are.
I don't want him to say, "Make sure." I don't mean loss of people. It means people for us, yes.
I agree. I just wanted to clarify that because I know what you meant, but I just want to make sure.
No, I appreciate it.
I don't want the world on the street to, that's what's going to happen. And we're going to have to look at staffing, positions, and those types of things. The good news about this is that session is early.
Yes, that's very good.
At least by the end of February, um, early March, we can sit down and really look at the real numbers. But it does look good because when we talk about teacher salary mandate, you know, one section says they're going to set a floor, the other one says, "No, we're going to go to the forty-seven-five." And it's going to be hard for us not to meet those mandates if districts around us because we have approximately eight hundred and sixty, eight hundred and sixty teachers below the forty-seven-five limit. So, um, there's a lot of work that we'll be getting, I mean, we're working on it right now. We're coming up with options that we'll bring back to you all. And we'll sit down and have a workshop and discuss the budget. And that will be the, the entire workshop.
And we did, we did express in Tallahassee that, that this, this has to be sustained. I mean, they looked at us, but it, they can't sustain it and, and fund it.
But as Representative Azulo had said, he didn't, he was hoping that there wouldn't be a, a floor on this. The House, the House has put in their budget and their implementing bill, a floor. The Senate has not. So, the Senate does, while it doesn't have as much BSA, it does provide some more flexibility in some of the areas.
I have to interrupt this and, and call for a time certain for, um, I've got a green card for Brayery Wolf. Hi. And I have to read this that come in, as you come to the microphone. This is a, just a, a statement that we read for, um, public speakers. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other breaches of respect, uh, and refrain from words of statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are construed as insults who tend to incite violence or breach of peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss nor take official action on any presentation. Any persons present who wish to speak fill out a green card. And I've got the green card. And I'm calling our first speaker.
Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Braydy Wolf, and I have two boys that attend Central Ridge Elementary. In 2018, we purchased a new belt in the Pine Ridge community. My husband and I love the neighborhood and area in which we reside. We are becoming increasingly involved in the community and youth activities, but most importantly, my personal efforts of volunteering at the school every day. As most of you should be aware, there was a serious incident that took place on my children's elementary school bus route the morning of January twenty-seventh. Principal Dickey informed all parents that our children were witnesses to not only vulgar language, students out of their seats, but also a physical altercation. Law enforcement was dispatched to the bus as well as Ms. Jones, the Assistant Principal for Central Ridge Elementary. My two boys were subjected to this scene and were not involved. However, both my husband and I are very concerned about their perception of this serious matter and the outcome and subsequent consequences to those responsible. We have discussed this issue with several other concerned parents who feel exactly the same way we do. We're not asking for this to become a permanent mark on their record. However, this board and administration must send a signal to the children that did disrupt the day and put others in harm's way that this behavior will not be tolerated. In addition to sending a signal to those responsible, you will also be sending a message to all others on the bus that their safety and well-being is paramount to you. In conclusion, I stand in front of you honored and proud to announce my candidacy for this most respected school board position. Thank you.
Thank you for your attention. Any other green cards? Any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? Mrs. Wilson?
How was that? How did yours?
It would be mine, but vote one and a half for twenty-six, twenty-two, so I'm not sure.
So, we're right.
Okay. Um, I just really wanted to go over that with you, um, looking at the, um, are there any questions? I mean, Ms. Hemel kind of said everything, Mr. Kennedy said everything about the FFP. Our current state right now, um, we are up two point six four percent over last year. Um, that was as of December. And, um, taxes are coming in quite nicely. About sixty-three percent of our revenue has come in for the year while we've only spent about forty-three percent. So, we have to remember there's twenty percent difference on what's coming and what's gone out. But, um, we need to, you know, just be cognizant of that. Our capital fund is up about eight point five percent over last year, so that's also a good thing. And, um, on the budget amendment, you will have seen that we were able to put a little over three hundred thousand back into the fund balance due to vacancies after we've made, um, the adjustments for the raises that were implemented in December. So, that's about all I have for you. If you have any questions?
Keep that money free, girl, and don't worry about it, ma'am.
There was not a test on that. So, um, have a good evening and thank you very much.
Thank you. And congratulations on your.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you. Attorney Legal Matters, um, we have a final order of suspension that we need to approve.
Move approval?
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. I have, I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryant to approve the final order of suspension in the interest of January ninth, twenty-twenty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Final order of suspension is approved, five-zero. Any other business to come before the board? Mr. Mullin? Oh, wait, we've got to approve some minutes soon.
Can we approve all one time?
Yeah, let's, if we can combine them, um, I can read all three of them and then if you, if you can, um, just.
We can.
We can approve minutes of the December tenth, two thousand and nineteen Administrative Hearing, Regular Meeting, and Public Hearing. Second, approve the minutes of the January ninth, twenty-twenty Due Process Hearing. And the third one is approve the minutes of the January fourteenth, twenty-twenty Administrative Hearing, Regular Meeting, and Public Hearing.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mrs. Powers, second by, uh, Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes stand approved, all three of them, five-zero. Back to citizens' comments. Ms. Dickey, you want to say anything? You're the only citizen left here.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
The citizens' comments, do I have to say this three times?
No.
Okay. Any other business? Mr. Mullin? Mr. Kennedy?
Just, uh, that we, looks like we have a new date for the official opening of, uh, the Phil Royal AMT Program at Crystal River Academy of Health Careers, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty at one P M. There's an impressive list of V I Ps. I have it as February twenty-eighth.
It is, it is for one.
Yes.
It's going to be one.
Okay. At Crystal River High School.
Oh, I had one P M, but unless it, unless it's, okay.
Well, are we going to get an email that Thomas from?
Yeah, yeah. We're going to get, there's a, there's a whole, there's a whole crew that's putting this together, so.
All right. And you know what you're wearing?
The Phil Royal.
Phil Royal.
Well, yeah, you, we may want to coordinate that. Um, there may be quite a few V I Ps. You may be wanting to dress in something different.
Okay, fine.
I can't think of anything more dignified than that T-shirt if not the comment.
That, well, and there's nothing wrong with that, but.
Put a tie on it.
So, we may, we can have a, it's a conversation we can have. I just don't want to.
Yeah, that's, well, that's, is that before our, that's before our workshop, right?
After.
Afterwards.
I'm sorry.
That's the, it would have been the last day of, so we can, that works.
We'll know more, we'll know more.
The only thing I have on my calendar that day is W C C's having their expo, but that's.
Let's make sure we, yeah.
Yeah, I just think, I, I just don't want you guys to, to not.
Under dress, yeah.
Yeah, under dress. Had done Friday, our weekly legislative update, um, or I should say our, our legislative committee update meeting. And just some things that I wanted to lift out to you all. Ms. Wilson did on the budget, that was really the big pieces that we need to be watching. Because it is, it's, again, the implementing bill and that language is going to be important. They are, they are not taking any amendments. This is going to go to conferencing. So, we're not going to really know where they're going to go till they get into conference. So, that, that's, that's a challenge. Yeah. And that, that's what's a little tough for us. Mr., uh, Mr. Dodd, I know is, is up on this even more than myself. But the Panic Alarms Bill is really moving through, um, all the chambers, and I think that's a really good thing. They are not entirely identical. The House and the Senate are looking at it a little differently. Part of this is coming down to the apps versus hardwired. And there's, there's, there's good cases on both sides on this. Money becomes a big factor. At the same time, and this was some of the interesting conversation with F S B A, was that if, um, because we are looking at, at different versions of this ourselves. But in some cases, if the app is being done, there is some districts that have incorporated language that they've worked with their staff on to give some assurances to get buy-in for installing it on their personal devices. And it's something that, uh, you know, we're not there yet, but I think it's something that we could at least look at, um, in those areas. The Baker Act Bill, this is, um, Ms. Representative Webb spoke to us at F S B A. H B ten eighty-three is the bill. There was some concerns in the language. And, um, with the help of Mr. Mullin, we kind of really had some concerns because it stated, and you'll find this interesting, Mr. Dodd, that a student couldn't leave the campus until, the, the, no, the principal was responsible, that the student could not leave the campus before the parents were notified. Well, the principal doesn't have the authority to, on a Baker Act, to withhold the, those, that would be law enforcement or a medical professional. So, there was concern that that language did not correlate. We had some back and forths with, um, with, with some of our people in Tallahassee. That has been removed. They still listen to notify, but it does not prohibit, uh, in any way that removal. I, I think their really effort is to try and bring some exposure and concern of saying, you know, what we've talked about of not having Baker Acts, um, to, to use it more efficiently and effectively.
Yes, ma'am. It used to be when you Baker Act, the action of bill for the person being sold is sent to the parent. Now, what is the case?
I don't know. That's a great question.
I didn't hear what, what.
Oh, it used to be the, the bill was sent to the parent when you Baker Act, but I haven't followed recently. I don't know what it works and.
I, I know that there's some situations right now, um, that, that have happened outside of Citrus County, that those types of incidences have come into play of who's now responsible with, with Baker Acting. Because we, there was an incident in the media just the other day that was a six-year-old in South Florida that was Baker Acted, and the parent was not notified. And that's what's drawing this attention to this bill. Another one, and Mr. Dixon's not here right now, but, uh, H V six thirty-seven Senate Bill, um, ten sixty-six has to do with impact fees. This could have a dramatic impact. Parts of it have been proposed in the past. They passed the House, but not the Senate. This year, um, there's some movement, and F S B A is, is encouraging us to watch this. Mr. Dixon has it on his radar. It would dramatically tie our hands on a lot of spending when it comes to impact fees. And in ways that raising or lowering them, um, it, it would actually almost contradict us being able to do it. And I say us being the county as well. So, that it's, it's a bill that we're looking at. The other big one that's out there is potentially going to be part of a train bill. And that's H V seven. and that's H V seventy seventy-nine, which is the accountability bill. One of the things that this is looking at, the standards, as you may have heard already, they have started rolling out. They've rolled this out to standards, these proposed standards. The Florida Department of Education is gonna be approving those standards, and then they will go to the legislature for approval. They're, they're fast-tracked right now.
I understand that they were already filing questions from Texas. One of the girls told me after I moved her up in Tallahassee.
Well, I, I don't know about that, because I know that most people have been a little surprised because no one knew about what the standards were gonna say, including the Pearson textbook people, which seems to always, they have an inside track.
They'd always know.
The, I, I want to thank the superintendent because she has had staff looking at doing a crosswalk between the current standards and the proposed standards, which is essential to helping our teachers to know where they're gonna go. And John Mullin has been doing an amazing job starting that process along with the Educational Services Team. What I think is concerning is, are these standards gonna marry up with the assessments? Yes, in this particular accountability, accountability bill, they're talking about removing the ninth grade E F S A and the geometry E O C, but they're talking about replacing it with one, a civics test, of which we have a test now with standards that seems to be totally glossed over and is, is being ignored. The other is to mandate the taking of S A T and A C T in the eleventh grade, and that those results would then be tied to the school's grades. Now, one of the concerns with that is, and there's some positive things about saying having kids take S A T, A C T. S A T, A C T has largely been assigned to Common Core. The standards that have been proposed do not align to Common Core. So that's a big question, is to say, where is that comparison?
And the problem that I have with the, the test at the eleventh grade level is the eleventh grade level is the P S A T for their National Merit Scholar. And that means that they would have, those who want to get into that scholarship fund would have to take that test in addition to the other two. So I, I think the eleventh grade is.
And that's been brought up as well.
Yeah.
But the problem is that the twelfth is too late to be able to do anything with the data, is I think part of it too. So the, there's some real questions, and unfortunately, things, you know, we're halfway through the legislative session. Representative Missoulo's Committee on K twelve Innovations, where a lot of bills flow through, they have said that they're probably not gonna meet. So that means anything that was assigned to that committee is pretty much dead. Doesn't mean it couldn't come back, but it's probably dead. That's happening in other committees. So, you know, we're, we're starting to get into people who are, you know, starting to wrap some things up. But there is still a lot of movement on a lot of bills, so those, those were those pieces. The other thing, thank you, Science Fair Ward, Beth Branch, and all of the site leaders did an amazing job last night. Veterans in the Classroom, Ms. Hammel, record year again of veterans visiting classrooms. Al Bock did an amazing job putting that together. Thank you for, for honoring our vets and for making that a pinnacle part of our school system. I did want to, for a moment, and, and end with this, I wanted to horse trade with Ms. Powers in the sunshine because I can, even though it's not a big deal, but Ms. Powers, I wondered if you might be willing to take LaCanto High School SAT assignment effective immediately, and, and I'd horse trade if I could take Crystal River High School's.
That would work.
Okay. So.
That's gonna be for next school year, though, correct?
No, I'm saying that you do it now.
Okay, but ours is for next school year.
Yeah, we're gonna trade.
But I've got.
That's already been, that's already been posted, they already sent the email for next year, right?
Yeah, so this would flow into that as well.
And you'll let me know.
Yeah, I'll make sure that, that we get that.
That'll be good.
That's it?
And I have to say thank you for all that you do on this legislative end for us.
Yes, yes.
Beautiful work. I mean, you take, you take a load off all of our shoulders, all of the rest of us just rely on.
On you, Thomas.
There's a lot of people behind us, that's why.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, we have youth leadership citrus here today, Miss Simmel and staff was here, an interesting group, wasn't quite as big as in the past, but we had some good questions, and Scott, Dr. Heber, I appreciate your staff being here and all those questions that we answered. We got some good feedback, it was kind of interesting hearing those students and student leaders talk, but and I wanted to announce the Made for the Trades banquet, or dinner and auction to benefit with the Good Tech College is scheduled for Friday, March thirteenth, at the Citrus County Fairgrounds Auditorium, and that is a Education Foundation sponsored event.
What time is that?
And it was six to ten. And the tickets are being sold through the Education Foundation, and you're gonna get more information that will be emailed to you. Made for the Trades Dinner and Auction.
Where's, where's it gonna be held?
At the Citrus County Fairgrounds Auditorium. Yes, the Fairgrounds Auditorium. So we wanted to start spreading the word about it, and there, like I said, I'm sure you'll be getting some more information on it.
Thank you.
But I just want to make sure you're aware. I was at the Upper Bound Middle High School program again, as many of you were, the Tropicana Speech Judging Contest, I've been involved with that. It was primary school. I missed the Veterans in the Classroom lunching, I was at the Florida High School Athletic Association meeting, so that's why I couldn't be there. And then I made it to the County Science Fair Auditorium, but I didn't make it to the awards banquet. I was, though, at the Emerson Middle School SAC meeting last night, so I had the school advisory council meeting there. We are having a safety and security meeting this week. Are there any topics that you would like for me to put on the agenda? Any topics for safety and security?
The alarms thing, just the, you know, what we're talking about, I think it's just be aware of it. And I know you're kind of, you, you've got as strong handles as anybody does.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that Citrus Springs Elementary just got some new radios, that they're not flush, though, if any radios are available?
Well, they.
Citrus Springs Elementary could use some.
Yeah, they, they had to buy some with SAC committee.
Right.
With SAC money last year, because they, they didn't have enough for administrators to.
Keep up with everybody.
So that's what SAC made for.
And then we don't want to forget that February fourteenth is the second year anniversary of the time of the former Stone Brothers High School, where seventeen people were killed and seventeen others were injured. And there's no school that day.
And there's some people that think the calendar committee did that to honor Stone Brothers, that was anything different.
Well, it is.
It was just calendar that they, the teachers selected.
Right, and we've done a lot in this district to continue to focus on school safety and security, and so I want us to continue with that. I know we will, but we need to remember that seventeen that lost their lives on attack, and do everything in our power to prevent that from happening in this county, and I know we are, and we're dedicated to that, committed to that, and so I just want to make sure we have that in our thoughts and memories, that those families too, that are still impacted on that.
Is he back?
Well, we started off with Teacher of the Year thing, that was a great celebration. Then I went to Forest Ridge Elementary School, again, nice reading. And Finn Johnston playing the guitar, they were awesome.
And Adrian singing with him.
Yeah, and everybody sang. Then we got messed up with the thing on the sixth, everything got changed to Monday, and I was so busy yesterday. Oh, my gosh. We got the Purple Heart thing coming up, Sam can't be there, but how many of you are going on Saturday?
I haven't on my calendar.
Out of town, out of town, are you going, Sandy?
I haven't on my calendar, no. It's a great celebration.
I, I, I. Which is it, I'm sorry?
Saturday, Purple Heart.
I can't, I'm, I'm at a conferences.
We can hold it up.
Yeah, I had to give regrets because I've gotta be at a swim conference.
All right, all right.
Every single one of the songs told you the service, I knew, I never realized until, you know.
Yes.
But because my family was very, my father very, very patriotic, I knew them all.
Let me see. We're fishing in Home Assassin, and then we are going to the African American Read-In on the twenty-third.
And I'm going as a committee member, but you're going as a reader.
That's all right, we'll be there. And that brings us to, oh, a question about what are we doing on the twenty-fifth? What time are we meeting?
Well, I was gonna bring it up when it got to be my turn, but let's talk about it. We've got a time certain over at the Board of County Commissioners at one oh five.
That's right.
So. Wayne, do you know how much, or at least how much we've got on the workshop agenda for the twenty-fifth? We are willing to start earlier than nine if we have to, but I think we need to leave here, and I don't know who's been at Courthouse last time, but I think we need to leave here by twelve fifteen, because we gotta take our cars, I want it to be done by twelve fifteen, take our cars over if we can find a parking spot, and if we can traverse over whatever construction is going on and get into the County Commission Building a little bit before one, like quarter of one, ten minutes of one. Is that Saturday okay, everybody? So.
Well, I believe there'll be some expulsions, I don't really know how many yet. I know that right now I have three, three topics for the, for the workshop, which would be pace, student code of conduct, and there's one more, there's one more question, but I know this three's a car.
Okay, is there anything with a safety issue? That's usually a lengthy one.
Not that I know of. Um, I can.
Anything?
Okay.
If we have three items in workshop, anything coming up as a special meeting?
The only thing that would be, would be H R.
Okay.
So we're gonna be at nine, from nine to twelve, and then be dismissed, and then meet at the courthouse at?
You want to start at eight?
Well, I would, I'd, I'd like us to be in there and seated, you know, a little bit before one, it's around five.
Just a journey.
Sam, could we get a van or something to, um, get into the?
I think it would be good, because I don't drive no other single, it is a problem, if you're trying to get a parking.
Could you get somebody to drive us? Great.
And I know, I heard Mr. Kennedy was saying something about, you know, the County Commission wants to recognize our superintendent.
But we have a new van by then.
That's why we're, we're, you know.
Okay, I was sitting there going, what are we doing? I was trying to keep it a secret, you're gonna be presented again. They're going to recognize you as.
And when is that?
It's on your calendar.
It's one oh five at the County Commission.
On the twenty-fifth?
On the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so what time are we getting, what time are we showing up on the twenty-fifth?
So you want to start?
Do you think nine o'clock is, is, we're safe with, with three, three hours, three in workshop?
We can always adjourn and come back if there's a.
I was trying to avoid that.
I know, but if we, you know.
Yeah, if we need to, we can.
And I can keep it, I mean, it's, I have a plan.
So nine o'clock it is, okay.
There are currently, there's pace and there's a recycling presentation, and then there are five policies listed.
Oh, there are five policies, that's new, okay.
There's five policies right now in the draft.
The code of conduct is on there as well.
Okay.
And the code of conduct is not on there, but there's those two, and there's five specific policies, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the code of conduct has to be.
Yeah, because we were all briefed individually on the recycling.
Okay, which brings me to March the thirty-first. I think we need to cancel our board meeting the week of.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-second, twenty-fourth, we need to cancel that one and come on the thirty-first, because that's.
That's our spring break week.
Spring break.
I concur.
Okay.
And a question, I guess, would be, do we have items on the thirty-first, let's see.
Do we have, do we have things on the twenty-fourth?
Oh, yeah. Do we have anything to move to the thirty-first? I, I can't remember.
Well, well, we've just, we've just moved anything that we would have heard on that, that workshop and special meeting.
On the twenty-fourth?
It would normally have occurred on the twenty-fourth, I scheduled it on the fourth Tuesday of the month, but we want to move to the fifth Tuesday of the month, because the fourth Tuesday is the spring break. Any problems with that?
No, and I, because again, we won't probably meet in May, and so.
We need to meet in March.
Yeah, we probably need to meet in March, because we've got March, April.
Well, I think too, I think we've got something that we've got to hear from her, and I think it's gotta be done. It's coming in on March thirty-first, I think so.
So we'll plan a nine o'clock, then on the thirty-first?
Nine o'clock on the thirty-first, workshop and any special meeting, okay? That's all I have, thank you, all right. I just did my own comment.
Just mentioning Upper Bound, all the members went to, it was very good speak, it was phenomenal, just sort of presentation with the children.
Yes, you did.
And enjoyed it very much, and then another thing I enjoyed, Academy of Environmental Science had a fundraiser Saturday, and the place was packed, I think it got hell, what, a hundred and twenty people.
Where were you? Where, where did it meet?
Pepper Creek Room up at the, upstairs at the old restaurant, Riverside Buildings? Not Riverside Buildings, but on the hundred and nineteen.
Remember to go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the attraction building on nineteen.
Okay.
And Mr. Bunch catered in, plenty of food.
Oh, my gosh.
Good southern food, that was very good.
Haven't heard how much they raised, but.
I don't know.
Zach?
I think it's seven thousand.
That's great, it was packed, we all.
When was that, when's Saturday? When did I miss that?
I will tell you that Michelle called me, and she wanted to see how, and I said, just use their email. I said, everything goes through email, just tell me you want to be there, so I wanted to make sure.
Oh, no, I was still under the weather. I was supposed to go to Tampa, and I canceled out of that.
It was, it was, it was a good time, it's a beautiful room.
And Sam spoke to the, through, and it was a beaut, a beautiful speech, I'm telling you, it was. When you speak, you speak from the heart, it's like nobody could speak like that unless they really meant it and felt it, you know? So it was, it was lovely.
I just liked her challenge, that she would get into one of those little wetsuits if she didn't get certified in scoop timing as soon as Zach did.
Good thing I hadn't got a call from him yet, he'd kill him.
No, I, I shared all the same experiences, Upper Bound, I think was great. And again, the speaker, I, I had run seventh grade.
That was a good job.
That was a good, that was a good.
I congratulated Ms. Collins.
Yeah, and again, Teacher of the Year was just a phenomenal, it was a phenomenal thing, and it's, and A E S, the celebration was great. I just, I'm been overwhelmed by how great our kids are, and then, you know, look at what we did today. But the other thing that I had is, again, African American, because Ginger's gonna be one of our readers, but I also secured three readers from our schools, Lil Hayley Campbell, who's gonna write her own story. She's one of the Take Stop and Children, and so she's writing her own story. Then Shavon Garra from LaCanto High School, the quarterback, is gonna do one of the readings. And then the little girl that was in the musical up at Forest Ridge last year, Adrienne Hart, is gonna do a reading. Now she's at LaCanto Middle. So we've got some of our kids reading, and I think Citrus Springs Middle School somehow is bringing fifteen kids, and we're just gonna put them up on the stage like behind you when you read.
Oh, okay, thanks for the warning.
But anyways, there's, they ask for children.
So you got some.
And boy, we got some, I don't know, I think they're gonna say no kids next year. But there's, there's kids coming from the private schools, and our public schools are well represented, and, and they moved from like, I think twenty-two readings last year to forty this year. And there's still gonna be an hour or from two to four thirty, so no extension of time. But anyway, great group of people, and, and it's a fun afternoon, and the music, the music's just worth it to, to listen to.
You have to remember Free Spellman.
I do.
Well, he gets mentioned every year.
I know, but I will tell you that, yeah, I have a green speech, it's not on the agenda this year. It's, they're gonna end with, with a poem, and so, but they just, I don't think anybody wants to do it because they can't do it like first to them, you know, and so, a man tried last year, and so this year they're not gonna.
So where's Sonar on the day?
He's in Cedar Creek Rehab, Roosevelt Care Center in Crystal River, and they're not doing any better, you know, he just can't do it. So had a terrible, terrible stroke. Yeah. I mean, I think it's been two years now, it has been, yeah. Yeah, so, anyway, then I'm going to my first value adjustment board meeting on the twenty-sixth.
All righty then, all right, all right, Kelly.
I'm looking at all those magistrate hearings. So we're ready to go on that, and hopefully it won't last all day.
It won't.
Hopefully no one will be protesting.
But we're just gonna approve what the magistrates decide, it's kind of like when Sam says this is what we're gonna do, we do it. It's okay. But other than that, it's been a really good month, and I enjoyed watching. But other than that, it's been a really good month, and I enjoyed watching all the kids and, and just a good, fun month.
Sam, I want to say enjoy your trip.
Yes.
I'm leaving in the morning.
Yep.
It'll be a good week.
Yeah, you don't have to tell us all of it, just tell us the good part.
Send us a picture of your stage.
I'll do that.
Great.
And there was an advertisement on T V about where you're going, showing the beach and everything, oh, my gosh, you know, so...
That's scary.
My own niece graduates, the University of San Diego, yeah, beautiful area.
Who?
My niece Jennifer, one of the teachers this grade.
Yeah, okay.
At one of these upcoming workshops, we will bring some ideas to you all about what we're gonna do to get closer and closer to the budget, and one of the options we've talked about is maybe not meet class size, so we're figuring out what the penalty would be, but we still think we would gain some, quite a bit of money by doing that, but, you know, with the proposals from the House and Senate doesn't suit all teachers, so whatever money they give us, and we've calculated what that would give us and what we could reach, you know, we can't do less than what county's around us is, because I don't blame you, because if I was gonna leave and drive the soccer, and I use this as an example, for five thousand more dollars, so we're just gonna have to, you know, jump in there with both feet and see what we can do, where we can shuffle some funding. So, this, we will make it...
And I told people, they said, well, can't you cut that staff at...
I said, we, I've, we have done job descriptions for three years I've been on that board, cutting staff. And I said, we're working, we're gonna do a great staff, but skeleton almost, I highly accomplish what they do.
People don't see that.
Nope.[1785.13]